All right, we are live, we are on. Welcome today is our December 12 staff meeting workshop, combination of such. So with that, we got quite a crowd here today. Welcome everybody.
Good morning Chairman and Commission. One item today, this has come up many times in the last couple of years is how the county regulates and manages event centers in an incorporated county. The concept and the discussion of Airbnb's being allowed in the county has come up. Noise ordinances and that has, it's all part of what happens to a county when you have a combination of urbanization and ruralization meeting together. And that's, it's come up many times before. So Scott will kick this off today and kind of talk us through, you know, regulations as they are today, what the commission maybe wants to move forward into the future. And then there's a component to this also that Ronnie Tidwell is here to talk about is what it means to the appraiser's office too. So we'll try to cover all of this in an hour. So.
Okay.
Where's Scott? There you go.
Hi Scott. Name an address, you have five minutes.
That's a lot of material in five minutes, but we can give it a shot. So Scott Wedle from the Planning Department, thanks for having us here. With me today is Justin and JR and a number of other folks who have worked on this process. This I really see is continuing the conversation. It's an ongoing conversation and so we're bringing you an update on research that we've done and what we've discovered that other communities are doing. And we're going to highlight a number of different topics and we'll go through that. So let's see if this is working or maybe it's probably just better just to, okay, next slide, there we go. All right, so again, we're following up on some requests that we received at the last staff meeting and it's an opportunity for feedback for questions. So I'm looking forward to the discussion today. We're going to cover these three topics. So event centers in the county, what kind of regulations, land use regulations specifically, have other communities put in place. Likewise, also event permits, how do those work in some other counties? And then short-term rentals, how do other counties address those? And what I can't emphasize enough is that the breadth of this has been pretty big and reaching out to the communities, what you're going to find is that the research is not all completed. We're bringing you the most up-to-date information that we have at this time and we'll see what kind of feedback we get today and continue to conduct more research in the future. So event centers in the county and land use regulations, we're going to go over the background, state of the practice, recent discussions in terms of conditions and the next steps. Now I want to emphasize when we talk about item number three, recent case discussions, we do, there's due process concerns, we don't want to talk about specific cases, but I think in general, a conversation about things that you've heard feedback from community members that are important is good. And I will show you some examples about how we've addressed those in other cases that aren't even event centers. So just a quick note on that one, then we'll cover next steps. So in terms of background, back in 2016, we talked about this last time, there were changes to the code, really differentiated between those that are allowed by right on 20 acres or more and those that require conditional use. In 2023, there's been, it says multiple complaints, but I don't want to characterize that as anything abnormal, just that there have been complaints that have risen this to the level of a discussion. And then we had the staff meeting in October and then we've got recent cases that are ongoing about event centers. So at the staff meeting, we reviewed a number of things and there was a request for additional information about other communities and that's why we're here today. So I really see this as a general planning process that we're going through. So we're really looking at what's our existing conditions, where are we today? Then what is the state of the practice? What do other communities do? What are best practices? Where do we as a community want to be? And then ultimately, how do we get there? So the communities that we reached out to, there were 10 of them, they're shown on the list here. You can see that there are counties that are right adjacent to us and other counties that are beyond that elsewhere in the state. Oh, so actually, I'm going to turn it over to Justin to take you through the research. Let me go ahead and pivot over there.
Morning, everybody. Justin Constantino with the Planning Department. As Scott mentioned, we did survey 10 counties on the state of practice of event permitting in the county. Of the 10 counties that we did survey, we called them and we emailed and we did research of their ordinances. The counties were chosen due to their similarities with Sedgwick County, both in size and in urbanization. So of the 10 counties surveyed, only two, Wyandotte County and Riley County, had specific regulations for event centers. Scott kind of showed this graph here that just kind of illustrates what I was just saying about, about who actually has regulations. I'll go to Wyandotte County, they kind of lump in their event centers with other similar uses, they call them purpose-built or otherwise established event centers. So we're kind of talking physical structure here. This includes assembly halls, concert halls, dance halls, exhibition halls, convention centers, kind of your, what you would imagine when you think of a traditional event center. All of these are required to obtain a special use permit. No size limitations on event centers, but the occupancy limit will be determined by staff review. Wyandotte County somewhat differentiates between the established event centers and one-off events. So live entertainment, street fair, concerts in the park, or other entertainment that's provided by a business, though they kind of separate those as an event. And then, like I said earlier, they have their traditional event center. So all businesses, and this includes farms, are allowed to host up to four live entertainment events per year. Any business that crosses over that threshold would be required to obtain a special use permit as well. So again, they kind of differentiate between a traditional event center, a physical structure, and then if I'm having a business or I'm having a block party or I'm doing something to promote my business, I can do that up to four times per year, but if I want to do it any more times, now we're starting to get into a more formal process. The terms of the special use permits are for two years based on initial approval and then five years and 10 years on subsequent approvals. The special use permit may include conditions that are staff recommended. So during that approval process, if there's something unique to those circumstances, staff can chime in and add conditions to those. Riley County was the other county that had regulations. They categorize their event centers as rural resort or retreat or event center, so everything in their code falls under that category. These uses are permitted outright in commercial zoning districts. However, conditional use is required in agricultural zoning districts. So if it's in your commercial district, that's fine. Agricultural, you need to come to us and talk about it further. So the minimum parcel size is three acres. You can't have any kind of event on anything less than three acres as far as event centers are concerned. And the language gets a little vague here. The events must have access to a road of sufficient capacity and surface type. What is that? The goal is to safely accommodate traffic and the use that the event will generate. The use shall be located and designed in a manner that mitigates the visual impact on the rural character of the area. Again, that's somewhat up to interpretation. The Board of Zoning Appeals may require a rendering of the proposed structure to determine conformance to this guideline. So they may go back to the applicant and ask for more information upfront so that they can make a determination on those variables. The Board of Zoning Appeals may take action to mitigate any noise nuisance based on the hour of the day. And they do get specific here, if the use generates noise at 65 decibels or greater at the property line, or how often the noise occurs. So they really do start to get specific in terms of noise. Some of the other factors, again, not necessarily as much. You have this document in front of you at your tables. It is a best practices document from the American Planning Association. It was released back in November of 2018, but a lot of really good information that staff was able to get from this. We wanted to include it so that you had the opportunity to run through it, but a pretty small document, about eight pages, but it does cover a lot of the issues of concern that we've been bringing up over the last couple months. That includes traffic, noise, lights, and it does offer some suggestions throughout the country, what different counties are doing to hopefully mitigate some of these issues. Minimum lot sizes, as I mentioned earlier, Riley County is included in this study, so there is some additional information about Riley County in that document. The largest was 150 acres, that was in Round Hill, Virginia. Typically, the average that we saw was around 10 acres. As far as setbacks, 30 feet was the smallest and that's in Butte County, California. Lake Elmo, Minnesota, the largest, 100 to 400 feet, but what we typically saw was 100 feet. That's the number that generally seemed to come up the most in terms of setbacks of when you can have those events or where you can have those events. Screening, a lot of them didn't require screening, as I mentioned earlier, with, I think it was Riley County, kind of vague, you know, screened in a manner that mitigates visual impact. It does leave some interpretation, whoever the staff member or the commissioner is or whoever it is that's making that determination. Floor area limitation, this is the size of the actual building. Some do have floor minimums, some are, you know, it does vary by property size, other were the percentage of the property area. So, so there's really some variation there. Access, they need to have access in Knox County, Tennessee, have access to an arterial or collector street. Rutherford County, Tennessee does not allow access off of private easements. Some communities do require traffic studies. Again, not a lot of language in there about the quality of the road. Does it have to be paved? What type of surface is it? But still some good information there. Hours of operation, these tended to vary. Hood River County, Oregon, limits events 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Some of them didn't have restrictions at all, but they didn't want anything happening after 10 o'clock PM. As I mentioned before, Riley County uses decibel levels, 65 decibels. Lighting, that was a big concern. Not a lot of language there. Most of the information that we found is highlighted here with Riley County, but some of the research that staff did as well, pretty standard. Lighting needs to be contained to the property, cannot go beyond the property line. All lighting shall be shielded or directed away from the adjacent lot. The goal is to prevent spillover, obviously. Event size limitations, those are kind of all over the place. Some of them were huge, some of them were smaller. Some of them had a limitation on the number of events that would be allowed per day. Hood River County, maximum of 300 guests. Back to Butte County, maximum of 500 guests. There was even one that had 5,000 guests. So really, it depends on the location and kind of the, I think the vibe that they're trying to get or prevent. Again, recent cases, Scott, I think this one might be you.
So we've done a review of what's going on in the counties around us and across the state, also what some national research has shown. So now I want to go through just some things that have come up with event center cases. And those comments have really been focused on these things, so lighting, screening, noise, access. Also, an additional one that I don't recall if it came up at the, at the bench, but if it's, but it's been one about uniform application of conditions and requirements and how does that work? So we'll cover all of these a little bit more in depth here. So in terms of lighting, the zoning code does have a section that addresses lighting. This is the text right out of it. And what it does is it indicates that lighting fixtures shall employ cutoff luminaries to minimize light trespass and glare and shall be mounted at height, certain heights. So the end effect is really to try and keep that lighting from spilling over directly into adjoining properties. In a similar fashion, in the same section of the code, there is, there are requirements about screening and you can see that text here. So, and it's really about providing screening in a variety of different formats to make sure that, again, it's not having an impact on residential areas. Now, when you get into the rural areas, I think there's quite a bit of consideration about, number one, you've got, you can have significant distances between different land uses, as well as you can have existing vegetation and whether or not that can mean it. But in any case, I'll just indicate that that's in, in the code in the same area as the lighting. In terms of noise, so there's no specific standards related to event centers in the county in the zoning code. We have addressed this sometimes through the hours of operation and putting limits on that, as well as in other cases, we have, and for community event centers, we've put restrictions on where and when and how amplified music or systems can be used as well. But then there's also been some cases where we've had some unique conditions and so I wanted to show you at least one of those. This was from a nightclub case and it's the text straight out of the, in that case, a PUD that was on the case. So we can do some fairly unique things to meet the individual needs of the cases. So just want to point that out and give you an overview of it. Hours of operation, again, here, we don't have really like a standard, other than that we've carried forward what we have applied in prior cases. We generally try and do that when we have a case that's similar, we try and carry forward the conditions that we've used in those prior cases, especially if they're not custom or specifically related to the location of that one. So hours, I think where we're at is that we've had a good discussion about start times and so I think we're going to start seeing those included in cases. And I think a question that comes up is, when do they start and, but when do they end? And for us, at least for me, when I'm reviewing a case, I always look to see what the context is of the location relative to what's already existing in the area. And that goes beyond community event centers, that goes to just event centers even in the city, because we'll have some with residences pretty close. Access, dust roadway, I think that that's been a topic of discussion. Again, we have no specific standards on how that's going to, for event centers, how that plays out in the Unified Zoning Code, but again, we have addressed it through unique conditions. And again, I wanted to show you that we do have some language, this is not apples to apples, but rather I just wanted to show you some of the flexibility that we have. So when it comes to parking surfaces, we say shall be improved with an all-weather surface. That may or may not be something that you want to have applied for event centers, for the driveways and access to it, but I want to show you that that's an example of language that we do use elsewhere. In addition, for rock crushing operations, there's a, dust is a significant concern. And so we have language that we've used on multiple cases indicating all-weather material, minimizing the dust and also, in that case, a water truck. I'm not saying that that's appropriate for event centers, but I'm commenting that we have unique conditions that we've used to address dust in other situations. The uniform application of conditions and requirements, again, a question that's come up, there's a distinction, again, in the code between by right and those that are allowed by conditional use. There are specific conditions that are applied to those by right and I think there's like 18 different things that are listed in the code already. And for the conditional uses, again, this is a list of conditions that we typically apply based on what's happened with prior cases. So in terms of next steps, we've provided just an overview of where we're at in terms of our research today. So I guess I'm curious to see what the input from you all, what the feedback is, and also eventually to identify potential changes, not necessarily today, but as we work through the process. And we'll continue to work with the MAMPC advanced plans on it. So with that, I think it's probably best if I, if we stand for questions on this particular topic and then we can move on to the next ones after we're done.
Any questions, comments so far? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thanks for the work you've done on this so far. A couple of things, you did mention parking, I think, and it came up last night at my citizens advisory board about parking on roads, county roads or council roads. Probably don't want them parking on our roads. Parking on, and we might need to make sure that there's adequate parking on site for whatever the size of the event's going to be, so I don't know how we define that. The other thing that actually came up again last night was noise, their applications that we saw last night did have something on decibel levels at the property line. I think that that's probably appropriate to keep the noise bleeding off. And you've already addressed the lighting to make sure that it doesn't cross over the property line. So those are several of the things maybe we need to incorporate.
Thank you.
If I could, hey, thanks again. I want to echo Commissioner Dennis's thoughts on the amount of work that went into this with your staff, so I appreciate it. Couple of questions on the noise piece of it. Do we know how many venues that are currently as event centers operate weddings?
I don't.
It's a significant portion of these events are wedding venues, correct? Yeah.
I'll defer to Kelly on that one.
Well, my main question is this, is I understand limiting noise at the property line, particularly for amplified music on the inside, but some of these weddings, and I've done weddings at these venues before, do outdoor weddings. Is it, do you think it'll become the recommendation of planning to not allow amplified music outside for these weddings?
It's an interesting question and we've got a number of different options. One would be, we could tailor it to the time of day when it's occurring. I don't know that we've got, I don't know that we've got a definite standard approach that we use on that yet.
Okay.
So that's, that's where I think that these discussions are really.
I think they're helpful, yeah. Some of the discussions that I've taken part in is that we wouldn't allow amplified music outside for these wedding venues, which would be an incredible challenge to these businesses that do outdoor weddings. Some of these businesses that are doing events, who are doing outdoor weddings, they don't have a residence within a mile of the property line. So I'm curious if maybe that should be a consideration. Decibel levels, I think, matters at property line, but should we consider and take into consideration how close a residence is to the property line? I mean, in my opinion, and this is, I'm not the expert here, but if I have a neighbor that's 100 feet from the setback or a residence 100 feet from the setback, we should consider noise ordinance differently than having a neighbor that's a mile down the road from the property line. And I think, because we have both in the county with event centers and setbacks. So I don't know, as we're, as we're dredging through these things, and the noise ordinance, I do think that we have to have a conversation about noise ordinance, but I think it's very circumstantial to each of these event centers and the impact that they're having on the residences around them. So I just didn't know if that was part of the consideration.
Great questions, great discussion. We know that noise has been something that's been brought up by residents who are already living next to event centers. We also know that it's been part of the dialogue that's happened with the commission. So it's definitely something we're going to, we're looking into and we're looking for feedback on. And so it's very valuable for us to get your perspective and thoughts on it today.
Okay. And I don't know, the 65 decibels, I don't, I'm not a noise expert, so a sound expert, I don't even know. We've heard talk of 85, 82.
About 80.
80. That is foreign language to me. I have zero idea what 80 decibels is versus 65 decibels and I just, I have zero idea. In my mind, frankly, I really, the proximity of the property line to other structures and residences, I think, needs to be part of the consideration in the event center. And if you're putting an event center and get approval on a conditional use permit or over 20 acres and you have a residence 150 feet away, I think there's a different standard that should be versus a mile away. So just discussion for conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
But let me comment on Commissioner Beatty's, is our county is growing and we can't set a standard today that we can't live with in the future because we don't know what the growth is going to be. Five years from now, there may be a house built within 100 yards of this property line and at that point in time, it could cause a problem. So I don't want to put together some kind of a guidance that we can't live with with growth.
Right. My thought would be is that if a house is, that it would change the decibel, the noise decibel or the noise, if a house is adjacent, that that would be a sliding scale of sorts that would permit, that would take into consideration if a residence was built on a lot next door to an event center. It would certainly change the noise expectation. But again, open for discussion, I don't know, I'm just trying to say that we have some venues in this community right now where we don't have residences within miles and to say that we can't do amplified music outside seems to be a little too restrictive for my taste.
I think it is such a wonderful discussion because it's showing the complexities of these, just inherent in the nature of what the business is and where it's located. So what I can commit to is that I think it's an excellent topic for us to continue to do some more deeper dives in terms of what other communities are doing. We've not seen really good examples where they address these nuances, but it's something that we can continue to look at and we can look at it even beyond event centers and ask these communities how they've handled other noise generating uses. We'll, so we'll continue to look into it and see if we can find an example that helps address some of these nuances.
That's all. Thanks, Scott.
Commissioner, just, just a point of reference, you have to be careful which decibel examples you look at because some of these examples are vastly different in how you describe levels. And so I'm not sure what the best level is for us to have a discussion around, but just on this one, it says that a lawnmower is 90 decibels, toilet flush is 80 decibels, that's dishwasher is 70. Another one of these examples I see here, it says conversation is 60 decibels and it says, you know, a city traffic, car, city traffic is 70, a truck is 80, hair dryer is 90. One thing I'll just make a point here is that the decibel scale, if you don't know, is logarithmic. And so that means that every time you see an increase of 10, it's really, it doubles every, I should say, so from 60 to 70 is not just 10 times louder, it's 100 times louder, if you will. So, I didn't say that quite right. Anyway, my point is this, it's logarithmic scale. And so 80 is, 80 is 100 times louder than 60, I should say it that way. Anyway, having said that, I recommended 80 the other day or 82, I probably need to be a little more careful with my words, I'm not sure that's the right number. They say 65, I think that's actually way too low. That's more like conversation to me, what I understand. So it may not be the right number either, but the things on this list of things we ought to be looking at are things that bother people across property lines. You know, property rights is a two-way street, two-way street. I want people, I want people to use their property to the best, however they want to, until it starts bothering other people across their property lines and they, their rights are now being taken. And that's my concern. So the thing like lighting and music are those that I think that really speak to me here. And generally, I don't like regulations. I wish people didn't require regulations, but we have had problems in the past. And I think that the things that seals someone else's quality of life is where I'm, really where I'm concerned. So I think the lighting is one and the sound level is another. I think the dust can be a third, traffic. I mean, we talked about all those recently and I, we talked about these other, these cases as they come to us, these are the ones that seem to really stand out to me. And hours of operation might be another, another thing we ought to be looking at, but I don't think we're, I do agree we need to have some, some standardization. Some of these things ought to be written down so that they're ought to be a starting point if you have an event center. One of my questions for you is, if we were to add some regulations regarding some of these ideas, what about the existing venues? Are we going to grandfather them or how's that work legally?
I'm going to defer to Kirk.
He always stands up when I talk for some reason.
Kirk Sponson, City County Counselor. There is some language in our Unified Zoning Code that addresses non-conforming uses, but that's part of a prior discussion. You know, at what point do retroactive impacts involve takings? And so that is an area of concern. And so just off the cuff, generally, I think the preference is for these to be forward-looking, but we can certainly discuss further as needed down the line. I'm hesitant to go really doing a deep dive, a public setting.
One thing you mentioned on that first, I don't know which county, county it was, but the idea of having a special, special use permit, I think that idea says that we have to have an agreement essentially as a, an application and a license, if you will, from the county. And if, we assume there's compliance, probably inspection opportunities, and if there's non-compliance or there's complaints. non-compliance or there's complaints, we have the right not to issue a future permit. So we have a way to control that over time. These, these conditional use permits, things we have is one-time only, and we'll never see them ever again. So if there's non-compliance, it ends up being civil litigation rather than any type of control from the government side.
I would say, and Scott may be thinking the same thing I am, when you look at these types of applications that come before the B O C C, it is common for there to be a condition that does give the zoning administrator, I believe, the authority to potentially review the situation, see if there is non-compliance, and if there isn't compliance, then there are opportunities to potentially withdraw or take away the conditional use granting.
Yeah. I think that's a great answer. I would just add that in some instances with, for instance, rock crushers, we have set a time limit on the conditional use. Typically, that's not advised and not recommended because, just because of the nature of, number one, if it's already been approved, has anything really changed in the amount of time that it take, you know, after five years or whenever it expires? The other thing, too, is just the, the burden that it places on the, on the property owner and also on the system for reviewing these applications frequently, on a more frequent basis.
I guess another question I have is, these are always handled, are these always handled by conditional use considerations rather than a, like a change of zoning?
No, they could be addressed through a change of zoning. But I think, I think that would probably be more controversial for the applicant to answer adjoining property owners about what, what could possibly happen there in the future. It just opens up a lot of other uses. So I think that's typically why we see them come in as conditional uses, because they just know they just want to do this one thing. We have seen them come through as P U Ds, as custom zoning, just based on the circumstances of the case.
Well, just another, another point of note here, if someone has a brand-new property, I talked to someone just last night, they had a, an outbuilding that was set way back on the property, but because it was a certain-sized building, whatever, required a driveway that meets our driveway standards all the way out to this outbuilding. And geez, I think, I forget, the numbers is 16 or 18 feet wide because of a fire truck and the turnarounds, and all the things that required, the amount of money that was invested for the driveway to get to that outbuilding was enormous. And we have, you know, I can think of a recent case here where the driveway happens to be an existing driveway to someone's residence, and it's going to be used potentially for 1,000 vehicles a day, and there's no consideration for the width of the driveway or, you know, that type of thing. So the requirements, the requirements for a brand-new building seem like much more stringent. And we also, likewise, we talked about a potential, a plat that's triggering a road requirement, whereas a conditional use doesn't. So there's a lot of weird things about this whole discussion that I think that seem to be, seem to have things that don't quite make sense when you compare these various parts of this discussion.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Let me go back to Commissioner House's questions and Kirk's response. We're talking about this because we've got bad actors out there today. So if we're forward-thinking, we haven't solved a dang thing. So I need our legal to figure out a way that we can make sure that the bad actors are taken care of, and we're not solving that if we're only forward-thinking. Thank you.
And my only comments would be that, thank you for the research, and I was quite surprised that only two agencies even have requirements. So that means, I first go into thinking, okay, we're going to take a lead on regulations when most other areas are not. That bothers me a little bit. I question, does 5,000 people at Lake Afton fall into this? My question, and I respect that some of the commissioners have problems in their districts. I haven't had one yet, and I do know of a couple, I don't even know if they're registered in event centers, but they've had pretty sizable events with a lot of noise, and neighbors were close, and not one complaint came in. So I'm hesitant to restrict or put, put regulations on, on places that haven't had any impact at all that would violate. And then the noise thing, I think you make a great point. Outdoor, outdoor concerts, or not concerts, but wedding dances are kind of common in our, in our culture. And so I'm, and then the noise level, I guess the last thing, I, lots of times, there's an event, a dance followed by fireworks, and are we going to get into the, when I was at the city, boy, the firework, the firework issue is very emotional. And again, I haven't had any complaints other than the Fourth of July time. So I just, this, this, to me, all due respect to my fellow commissioners, this looks in a reach of government regulation that I'm not sure that I'm all supportive of, for some of the reasons I said. Without, I'd have to talk to my venue, the handful of venues that are out in the district I live in, which I'm not sure I'd like to enforce anything on, on them at this time as we work through it. That's just my observation. Okay? Yep. Sarah?
I'm kind of in agreement going forward, like I struggle with regulating people for their property. I do think that we should look at, because there are, like Commissioner, in the state that there are certain event centers that have had continuous problems, and I feel like we should be able to do something if we're receiving call after call for an extended period of time. There should be something that we can do more than just send the sheriff out, make a note of it, and then, I mean, just, there should be a little bit more in that piece, but I don't know how much I would want to regulate. So I'm kind of, I guess, in the middle of everyone here.
Kind of, kind of difficult, for sure. But this is great information, and the research has been really good for, thank you.
Thank you. And about fireworks, that really is an explosive topic, so.
Scott, we'll handle the jocularities, Scott.
With that, shall we move on?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So the next topic then is event permits?
I need, I need to put something in on event centers first.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Ronnie? While you're coming up, Ronnie, I'll let everybody know that last night, Mark Clark is out today, couldn't be here, but said that Ronnie would be here. There are some appraisal-type considerations, which was kind of eye-opening. He sent a message to me last night, and I'll share it, we'll share it with everybody. Not anything final, but there is appraisal considerations on, on properties that should be part of the analysis, from my opinion. Anyway, go ahead. Nice to be here, Ronnie.
Thank you. Ronald Tidwell, chief deputy appraiser. When it comes to event centers, there is a statute out there, it is KSA 791476, which was amended by House, Senate substitute for House Bill 2239 into 2022 legislature session that basically allows event centers that are registered with the Department of Commerce to be classified as agricultural use land instead of either residential or a commercial classification on their land. There are currently 19 as of May of 2023 in Sedgwick County that have been listed with the Department of Commerce as an agritourism business. And the statute clearly states that the land devoted agricultural use shall include land otherwise devoted to the production of plants, animals, or horticultural product that is incidentally used for agritourism activities. For purposes of this section, agritourism activity means any activity that allows members of the general public for recreational, entertainment, or educational purposes to view or enjoy rural activities, including, but not limited to, farming activities, ranching activities, or historic cultural or natural attractions. Any activity may be agritourism. Whether or not the participant pays to participate in the activity, an activity is not agritourism if the participant is paid to participate in said activity. Like I said, there are currently 19 that are classified, there's 19 that are registered with the Department of Commerce, 18 of them are listed as agricultural land. Rise Farms, which is on top of Fidelity Bank, was one that we questioned with the director of property valuation, and he went back to the legislature to find out legislative intent, and their intent was not to give Fidelity Bank's parking garage agricultural use land because they're not, Rise Farms is not the actual owner of the property. But yes, there are 18 agritourism businesses, and going quickly through the list, there's about eight or nine of them that are event centers that are listed as agricultural use land, which, as Mark has presented several times, is a significantly lower valuation than land classified as other uses, so. But for event centers, that's where Mark wanted me to tell you where we're at and kind of give you another nuance to this whole situation.
Right. Well, thank you. But the state, at the state level, they're working through that still, do you think?
This part is pretty much already codified into law. There was an attempt to modify it again, to actually add the language that the property owner had to be the owner of the site to kind of clarify legislative intent, but that was vetoed as part of the whole tax omnibus package by governor, but we've been told that will be coming back. The other topic getting ready to come up here, which is the Airbnb short-term rentals, that's the part that is still being flushed out that I talk about after the next presentation, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the Airbnb thing is, is very important from the appraisal perspective. Okay. Any other questions, comments? No, thank you.
All right. I think we've got an hour scheduled for this, so we'll try and get through the next items here pretty quickly and just give you an overview. So the next one then is event permits, because the background on this one is that during the staff, prior staff meeting, there was a question about how are, how do they handle events, just events at a, at a venue, not, sorry, not an event center, but just events that occur on a property. So there was discussion about the Wichita example and how Wichita does it. So we did some research with a number of counties again on this one, and I'm going to turn it over to Justin to take you through this.
Right. As Scott mentioned, basically, we kind of split these two categories up. One is event centers, which I kind of assume is a physical structure or building that's used for events on a regular basis. Event permits, you know, those are more so just based on the event themselves, doesn't necessarily require a structure. As I mentioned before, a lot of businesses and stuff like that, a lot of residents, farms will have an event. So we did do state-of-practice research on five counties. Of those five counties, four of them actually had standards and processes related for special events. So to Commissioner Meisner's point earlier, about two counties earlier only having information about event centers, a bit more information was covered in the event permitting section. So depending on which code you read, they kind of spill over into different categories, but some of it is summed up in this event permit section. Douglas County, they kind of split their review of events, who reviews what event and when. The administrative review, that would be staff for low-scale events, less than 100 people at one time. If the event hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., that would be a staff review. B O C C review, more so for large-scale events, 100 people or more. So it's based on the number of, of people is how Douglas County does it. Similar to, I think it was Riley County earlier, up to four events within the calendar year are permitted for one property. I think the other language before said for one business, but you can have four events up to, for one property. Anything additional, anything more than four, requires approval from the Board of County Commissioners. There are a couple of different stipulations, and you'll see as we go into these event permit counties, kind of how they handle these, it gets more specific into some of the questions that we were asking, like location, and lighting, and, and hours, and noise, and things like that. With Douglas County, they did have some stipulations about vehicles not being parked or located in the floodway, shall not interfere with emergency vehicles. So I don't know if, how that plays out with parking, but they want to make sure that there is access for emergency vehicles to get to these events if necessary. The site shall be free of debris and litter. Noise levels are based on the county noise regulations, and lighting shall be contained within that property. And then Douglas County also had some language in there about flashing lights or animated lights being prohibited. Johnson County, they do get specific as well with their hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. No more than one commercial party or celebration shall be conducted per month at any one specific location. No more than four events shall be conducted at any one location during a 12-month period. So they do get pretty specific on that. Sound amplification and equipment, public address systems that shall not cause undue public disturbance to nearby residences or dwelling units. And then again, similar language with lighting needs to be contained to the site, and height and illumination intensity for that outdoor lighting should be contained within that site. Wyandotte County, in this particular case, the B O C C issues special use permits for uses such as trade shows, street fairs, promotional ventures, that sort of thing. Special use permits are granted without publication or posted notice and without referral to the planning commission. So in this particular case, the B O C C seems to be the ones sort of making the decisions here. They are able to provide that permit if conditions are met. That does include a written form of complete description of the proposed use from the applicant, how many automobiles are going to be there, the hours of operation, attendance, and other characteristics that may affect the neighbors or surrounding properties. And then the short-term use shall not be operated longer than 10 consecutive days, which I thought was kind of interesting. So I don't know if that's like a festival or whatever that may be. Again, they did have standard language, all materials, refus, equipment, all those things need to be removed from the property to restore the property to its natural condition. Riley County was probably the most expansive of the ones that we looked at. What they did was they sort of broke it down into three separate tiers. So when an application comes in, they determine what type of an application it is. If it's a type 1, pre-basic, private gathering, smaller in size, those are typically exempt from requirements. I would imagine something like a, like a backyard wedding or something like that, or a backyard event. Type 2, anything that's open to the public, we're looking larger events, 50 to 200 persons, that does require review by the B O C C. And other departments as well, county, fire, emergency medical services, they're starting to get involved in looking at those larger events, if it's 50 to 200 persons. And then again, type 3, this event open to the public, greater than 200 persons, those same conditions apply. All of those counties would review that, and they are required to go through a review process and get a conditional use permit through the public hearing process. So their, Riley County's was, was pretty intricate. And I'll turn it back over to Scott.
Thank you, Justin. So this topic is one that we, you know, we've just done research on. One thing that I did not, was not able to bring to you today was that, I think there was a really good conversation about the city of Wichita's process, and I wanted to bring that to you a little bit more in depth, but unfortunately, we kind of ran out of time. So that is one thing I'd like to get to you in writing, so you've got that to refer to. But again, what we'll do is we'll take input from today and any feedback that you've got. We'll continue to do research, kind of flesh these out a little bit more, and then, based on comments and feedback that we receive, see if there's any potential changes that are desired or that we should look towards. So with that, we'll stand for any questions.
So thank you for clarifying. So there's a difference between an event center and an event, whatever it is, just an event app permit for an event could be, they're not building a center, it's just having an event.
That's, that's right.
Okay. Questions, comments on that? Don't, don't really see anything. Looks like you've got some things in the works on that.
Yep.
Again, thanks for the research.
You bet.
We don't have public safety here today, and Rusty may want to speak up, but I know the sheriff and EMS chief, police, the fire chief, they're concerned about some the sheriff and EMS chief, police, the fire chief, they're concerned about some of these large-scale events in the, in the county. They take the brunt of the front end of those kinds of calls, so it's just something to consider as we move forward with any type of regulation that we look at for this type of event. I know they at least want to be consulted before it moves forward, so they're aware.
And so on an event permit, there's no appraisal input on that? Right. Okay. Okay.
Just making some quick notes. Thank you. Okay. Next topic then is short-term rentals. So again, this came up as part of the staff meeting last time, and there was a question about if and how other counties regulate short-term rentals. So again, short-term rental is typically Airbnb, VRBO, offered online or through an app. And this, this has come up as a conversation because the zoning code prohibits stays under seven days in residential districts, most residential districts. And this is a conversation that's going on both globally, just all across the world, but then also closer to home with Wichita adopting the changes recently. So in terms of the state of the practice, we reached out to the same 10 counties that you'd seen before, and I'm, I guess I'll, I'll take you through this one. These are just slides that highlight what we found. So there were no regulations that we identified specifically for short-term rentals in Kingman County, but they do have regulations concerning bed and breakfast. Now, a big caveat to this, and one that I wasn't, we weren't able to get the answer to, is just because they don't have regulations specifically addressing short-term rentals doesn't actually mean that they don't have regulations that prohibit them. Similar situation is what we have right now in that our code prohibits stays less than seven days, so therefore, short-term rentals aren't allowed if you're, if you're renting for less than that. So this may be the situation, it's something we need to do a little bit deeper dive with these communities to learn about. Harvey County requires a conditional use, and they have a series of standard conditions addressing noise and some other things there. Again, because of the time, I won't, I won't spend too much time on them, but we've got the reports with you that have the detailed information. Butler County, again, no specific regulations focused on short-term rentals, but they do have a conditional use. And they use golden factors when reviewing this, and mentioned a couple other things specifically, which was compatibility and impact to infrastructure and services. Sumner County, no regulations, and they permit them by right. So people are allowed to have those inherently there. Reno County, no specific regulation. Again, they do require conditional use for bed and breakfast, which makes me wonder if perhaps there's something we missed in that they, they do prohibit them, but we're not sure at this point. Johnson County, again, similar situation, no specific regulation on short-term rentals. They do offer, have a conditional use as required for bed and breakfast, but it looks like they are looking into whether or not they should have specific regulations on short-term rentals. Douglas County, they're in the process of updating their code, looking at an update, and they expect that conversation really kick off in earnest early next year. Miami County, no regulations, again, a conditional use required for bed and breakfast. Wyandotte County, now this one is a little bit unique because it's, it's a unified government, but they have quite a few things that they require as part of this. So they do have specific special use permit for it and a number of requirements as part of the application process. They have a limitation on how closely they can cluster, as well as other conditions that they apply. So, and there's a business license that is required as part of their process. And then for the City of Wichita, you've seen that one in depth. I'm happy to take any questions you've got on it, but in essence, it comes down to that an administrative permit is required for the most of the residential, the most common residential districts. And if it's controversial, then it gets kicked up to a conditional use, and that an annual license is required. So again, the steps from today is we're going to take input, feedback, answer any questions that you've got. Based on that, we'll continue to look, conduct research and identify potential changes, and we'll work with M A P C advanced plans. So with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions on this one? I'm going to guess Wyandotte might have, I'm thinking in terms of, I know in, in the Wichita area, when we have that, when we have the annual golf tournament, there's a lot of people come in for seven to 10 days before, two weeks, players, caddies, whatever, and stay in homes in the Crestview District, which is in the county. I'm going to assume Wyandotte, with the number of activities they have going around the racetrack, they probably have a similar request for stuff, so I can see why they may have some limitations. Okay. I just a comment. Okay. And this is the one we need your, the Ronnie report.
There's been a recent directive issued by the Director of Property Evaluation that supersedes the former bed and breakfast directive, and this title's actually changed to the classification and valuation of bed and breakfast in other mixed-use facilities. For classification purposes, we are to classify short-term rentals with five bedrooms or less as residential, or if it has more than five bedrooms, so basically six or more, we are to classify it as commercial. This is the current directive that goes into effect for 1-1, 2024. If it does not comply with zoning or regulation requirements, we are to classify it as commercial. However, of course, there's always the however, if they do have continuous night stays greater than 28 days and can supply proof of that continuous stay, then it can become mixed use between commercial and residential, similar to hotels, similar to other vacation stays. So that, kind of like I was mentioned earlier, this is, this is a formal directive, we are required to follow it. However, with conversations with, that Mark has had with other Kansas appraisers and also with P V D as late as last Thursday at the K A C conference, there's going to be some possible changes to this because five bedrooms is kind of a high number and stuff. So, but right now, the directive is five bedrooms or less, it's residential classified.
Chairman, stick that for just a few minutes back. Questions and comments from commissioners?
Nope. All right. Go ahead. So they're going to base it on number of bedrooms, not the intended purpose, which is to actualize a profit, like a rental property?
Rental properties are still classified as residential.
I know. That's my point.
But under the current directive, yes, they're basing it off of the number of bedrooms. Because of the bed and breakfast law that went into effect back in 2006 or 2007, that basically allowed bed and breakfasts to be classified as residential rather than commercial. P V D was just going to keep the standard the same until they had more information.
Do you know when they're going to be making any final determinations?
Like I said, this is the directive that is issued for 1-1, 2024, so any new directive could come out between now and 1-1, but if it doesn't, it would probably be effective 1-1, 2025 valuation.
Makes your job tough.
Little bit, but we're used to change.
Do you know, Scott, when you're wanting to, when are you going to report back a final recommendation for timing purposes?
Yeah. I would say we don't have a strict calendar on this one in terms of a schedule. I, I think we prioritize it based on urgency with, relative to other projects that we have. So I, I know that event centers in the county is a hot topic. This one, I don't know, I guess I'm curious for feedback on that.
I think it's a hot topic in my district. We have some hunting lodges in other areas that are, that are wanting to actualize purpose for Airbnb that are on pause right now. So I, I would say that there are current, and it's not in code, it's not permissible right now, but there are current opportunities to commercialize some business with Airbnbs and with short-term rentals that, in my purview, I think it, we'd serve our constituents better if we, the sooner we move on these things.
Thank you.
Since this is changing, at some point, we're going to have to update the, the M A B C D codes and stuff to reflect, if you will, the P V D's new interpretation. So is that, you have, you have a handle on that plan?
Do I, I would, here you go.
This directive literally hit mine and Mark's mailbox Friday afternoon.
Okay.
And we are in the process of reaching out and trying to get a meeting scheduled with planning to start kind of working through all of these nuances and stuff, because we kind of need to be involved in this a little bit more in depth than with event centers, but because we've already been told this very well could change significantly, or it may not change at all, but we've started a dialogue of trying to work with planning.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Scott, or anybody here?
I'm just curious, in terms of the tax fairness of this, I always, I'm always interested in fairness in taxation. So it's interesting to me that certain types of facilities we consider to be short-term rentals, there's taxes that are required, and in this case, it sounds like they're not. I'm not quite sure why that is. Any thoughts there?
Talking like the gas transient tax?
Yeah.
It was, talking to other Kansas appraisers, it was led to us to believe that a lot of the short-term rentals companies are following the transient gas tax rules if they're required to by the municipalities and the regulations. Now, I don't, haven't read ours fully in depth if Wichita or Sedgwick County requires. I mean, I know Wichita requires it for the hotel motels, I don't know if they require it for short-term rentals. That'd be more of a question for, I guess, their administrative side of it than.
If I understand correctly, I think for the Airbnbs within the city, I don't think that they do.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Was that part of the conversation on the city side?
It did come up during conversations, yes.
How many of these, probably have no idea, how many of these short-term rentals are basically, we don't even know about them at all. I mean, this may be just happening without no knowledge, without knowledge at all.
Yeah. So, so what we've done is, they don't disclose, often they don't disclose their addresses on their postings. So there's an entire industry that's really sprung up to identify where short-term rentals are taking place, and it uses artificial intelligence to match photos and street view and all kinds of stuff. The, we've talked to three different companies, and the City of Wichita has actually contracted with a company now to provide this service, and they had reported to us that there are 500 to 600 that are currently operating in the City of Wichita that are unique short-term
Sorry, I had to escape for a minute. So Ron, you, Ronnie, you explained to everybody the perplexity of working with the state to clarify.
I believe it was received. I don't think anyone was happy with it, but.
No, and Tom, maybe you can distribute Ron's or Mark Clark's letter, or his memo that he sent out last night. That way you have a little more code names and numbers and things like that. Thanks. You've done a lot of work, Scott, and you guys, thank you very much. Okay. What else?
That's all we had for today.
That's it? Okay. A couple of lectures in, do you have, anybody else? Nothing? All right. Anything else we, we need to address? Okay. Got anything? We'll see everybody tomorrow morning. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.